And all that good stuff was an option for me, which didn't help and made me feel like crap. So I started on my journey to healthier things, diet change. And with that came learning about medical marijuana and realizing that it has some serious medical benefits that I never knew. I, like most people, used it when I was younger and throughout the years, but never really knew what it was doing for me. Never knew that having this strain with this terpene was completely different than having another strain with another terpene. So I started taking RSO oil or Rick Simpson oil, which is a highly concentrated form of cannabis. It was pointed to earlier with the people that use like butane to dab. I don't know anything about that because I don't do that. But it's RSO or BHO. One is used, made with alcohol, one is not, I think. Is that correct? Okay, good. And was taking that. And I was able to shrink my tumor. And I had my kidney removed in February 2016. And it was a great day. I have three children. And not knowing if you're going to be around for your kids is hard. Not knowing or being having an answer when you're going to get better is even harder for your kids. But most importantly, being able to just live every day with them, even when I was taking the RSO and not knowing that I was going to be able to have surgery, was very, very important for me because I lived every day like it was my last because it made up then. And in all honesty, without cannabis and without, I mean, I still had to make the long drive to get my medicine, which I was fortunate enough to have lots of family to help me do that. Not everybody has that. Lansing, more importantly, because they test their products, trust the dispensaries out there that I will always go to. But it's very important. And besides of all of the benefits that will come to the city, Lowell taking a stand and letting patients know that you guys care is very important. We see many patients that the drive to Lansing is not even a thought. That's not going to happen for them. They can't make it out there. They don't have family that can help them. They have jobs. They can't get out there before. Basically, it's a number of issues. And having a provisioning center closer would definitely alleviate that. And I have full confidence and Connor that he will follow everything he needs to follow. He already left test now, which is extraordinary for a caregiver to do. So you know that. Not many caregivers don't do that. Connor does do that. So that's my story. Does anyone have any questions for me? Yes.
Just to understand, they couldn't do surgery because your tumor was too big?
My tumor was too big to take out, yes. If they risked rupturing it while they were trying to remove it. So I, yes, I took the RSO to shrink the tumor, which I was able to do. Well, which obviously was able to have my right kidney removed. And I have been cancer-free. I get tested every six months and I didn't have it spread anywhere. And obviously, I contribute that to cannabis. Any other questions?
Just for the public comment record, who have your name?
I'm sorry. Natasha Brownlee. And I am 1335 Gladstone, Grand Rapids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Kathleen Graham. I am a certified hospice and palliative care registered nurse, regional manager for one of the largest hospice programs in the nation. I have cared for patients usually in their homes throughout the state of Michigan. When cure is no longer possible, hospice offers intensive care focused on pain relief, comfort, and enhanced quality of life. I've been directly involved with the care of many Michigan patients whose end-of-life journey was significantly improved by the use of medical cannabis, made legal by the voters in 2008. Our hospice teams work hard to deliver symptom management and pain control that still permits patients the ability to interact with others. During the last few years, we have learned by real-world experience that cannabis can improve the quality of life for our patients whose days here are diminishing. From my personal experience, I have seen medical marijuana accomplish many things for patients facing their final days, including control nausea of the patient undergoing chemotherapy, stimulate appetite in a patient facing malnutrition, ease muscle spasms, decrease pain, and improve ability to sleep. While pharmaceuticals are available, which reduce these symptoms, which happen when the body goes through the natural process of shutting down, they are very sedating. A patient should not be medicated to the point of coma to manage these symptoms. I have seen cannabis help many patients achieve a balance of symptom relief and quality of life. This allowed them to interact and have quality time with their extended family and friends. During the past few years, as the legislature was coming up with regulations, I was actively involved as a citizen and as a nurse urging former Representative Colton and his colleagues ever opportunity I could to include amendments that would help protect patients by providing an assurance of purity, consistency of dosage, and full disclosure of active ingredients. While it is not perfect, this new law is a big step forward with the current system where caregiver can grow at home with the smelling green in our communities. Their overages often end up in our streets and in the hands of our youth. Allowing the cannabis businesses will ensure a system where all marijuana medicine is tracked from seed to sale with lot and batch information that will allow for recalls if problems are detected. Secure transportation of product is guaranteed. All raw marijuana and marijuana-infused products will be tested and packaged to stringent standards. They will have accurate useful labels with independently verified information, which is needed to help guide both medical teams and patients in making informed choices. All of this helps to minimize the chance any would end up in the streets in the hands of our children and at the same time ensuring a more pure and consistent product for the patients. I believe allowing these facilities in the community will mean thousands of local residents with serious diagnosis will finally be able to acquire the quality of medical marijuana their doctor and care teams recommend. In addition, through my company, CS Health Stop, I provide cannabis education to medical professionals. I presented at St. Mary's Hospital recently. I consult with patients and I direct them to help find the right chemo type of cannabis for their specific disease process. I would also like to mention that the federal government does have in place that no federal monies will be allowed to prosecute states with robust regulations in place. And I would also like to point out that we are eight months into the new Trump administration. And if they have not changed anything now, it is very unlikely that they will. And I can be available to answer any questions you guys may have.
Kathleen, you talk to, you teach and speak in front of doctors. Are they a hard sell?
Some of them are, but I teach on drug-to-drug interactions, the antidote for overdose. Talk about the different methods of consumption and how that affects our patients and how we need to maybe alter the medication that we give them as far as pharmaceuticals and how we can best proactively help our patients better take care of their cell. Because even though we deal with end-of-life, the quality of life and taking care of our patients is very important to us.
Thank you. I think there was a question earlier. And as far as, I don't want to give my blood pressure medication. It's so many kilograms and all that. There's a standard.
Yes. Yes, I'm actively involved with the licensing and regulatory affairs bureau to help them set that THC limit and to educate them. Because I have spent time at National Institute of Health and have spent time educating myself and with the people that own laboratories in Israel that have that information. And it can be dosed. It can be set as milligrams. And that's part of why I advocated for testing for an active ingredient list with a full microbiological analysis. We're working on that currently.
So there is a measure as a purpose crime. So watching out for folks getting too much overdose, not enough of underachieving, what needs to be done.
That is correct.
But there are no guidelines in place for that?
That is currently being made in our department.
So you're going to have it, like you said, there's going to be a standard then? Because I believe in some of the literature I've read that it's 30% higher now than it used to be.
Yes. And it does, we have great growers that continue to improve the quality of the medication. But at some point, we have to look at what is in there and what the patient is taking and how it affects the patient. And that is where I feel being proactive in our government, helping upset that, giving them the education they need is very important. And so I do go and I educate them that it should be a limit. Because how can we guide our patients or how can our patients know how it's going to affect them unless they know what's in it? So that's why I very much, especially you becoming very well knowledgeable about all this. I commend you on doing so. And I encourage anybody to come out. August 21st is their next meeting. And I have encouraged them. They are doing it by webinar. So anybody that cannot make it to Lansing can attend. Use your voice, use your input. Tell them what you want. Tell them that you want limits on that. And come out and speak, please. Anything else?
No. Just your address, Kathleen?
3244 Ike Switch, Grand Rapids.
Thank you.
Kathleen, I'm sorry. You mentioned Israel. Are they a group, a country that is using marijuana as therapy for health reasons?
Yes, they are. Their health insurance actually pays for it and they give it free to their veterans for PTSD. At the end of this month, we'll present at the Cannabis Science Conference where Dr. Beedi from Israel, who has the number one laboratory, will be there. He is currently doing research and has found that types of cannabis A, B, and C working with prostate cancer, brain cancer, and lung cancer. And has found that cannabis type C works on prostate cancer, but does nothing to work on brain cancer or lung cancer. So it is, from my standpoint, very medical. And we aim to try to do the best that we can to benefit the patients.
So the science is there. We just need to consider it and see if we want to go in that direction too? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. I'm Cliff Jankovic. I own jewelry store across the street, 208 East Main. Been there since 2002. Happy to report I will soon be a Lowell resident. We're going to be renting bottom part of a house at Monroe and King while we fix up our second floor and move there. Our house is sold. Anyway, I'm here to support dispensary Lowell. Connor and his partner stopped in my store just to sound me out about it. And I was like, hey, I'm all over it. And I wanted to tell my story. Some of you may be familiar with it, but I'm going to go over it. In 2013, I was diagnosed and treated for stage four throat cancer. Not a smoker, not a heavy drinker, just got lucky, I guess. I had seven weeks of daily radiation, three doses of cisplatin chemo at the beginning, middle, and the end. In the process, I lost 40 pounds, landed in the ER twice with complications, spent three days in the hospital, finished up with a feeding tube because I could no longer eat or drink. I couldn't eat because I had no appetite and because of the pain. In addition, the chemo completely killed my taste buds. Food tasted like crap, literally. It was weird. And as a result of all of that and the weird things that happen when you get treated for cancer, my anxiety level was through the roof and I had a very hard time sleeping. I grew up in the 60s and 70s, so I'm familiar with marijuana. Didn't do a lot for me because it pretty much made me sleepy and hungry. I put a couple dots together through my treatment. I thought maybe this would make me a perfect candidate for medical marijuana. My request at the cancer center was kind of poo-pooed, but that's another story for another day. In 2014, I found a place on Michigan Avenue in Grand Rapids, met with a doctor, and got my card. The card was good for two years. At the time, we traveled all the way to Ann Arbor to get medical marijuana because there are no dispensaries in Grand Rapids. I believe that's still the case. I want to address something quickly. Number one, you need to erase the image of a stoner eating a bag of Doritos, going to a medical marijuana dispensary. I'm sure there are exceptions to the rule, but the prosecutor tried to paint it as fitting a group of 18 to 38-year-olds that had no serious conditions. Well, I'm 59 and I had cancer. So I'm the exception to whatever thing he was trying to draw. Also, everything, I was not going to smoke anything. I was treated for throat cancer. I couldn't even drink water. So smoking was out of the, I had little candies. Everything that I bought from the dispensary in Ann Arbor had a MCG. It told me the number of micrograms of the medicine that were in it. Also, when I went there, I didn't just show up at the door and some guy handed me some stuff out the door and I came back two weeks later. They actually sat down with me, asked me what my problem was, what I had, what led me to be there. And they made recommendations based on what I told them and what I was trying to accomplish. I mean, the days of a bag of weed are history. She referenced this guy in Israel. I've seen videos of him. He's insane with tracking, he's cracking marijuana and cannabis and trying to find all the different things that are possible from this plant. And it's pretty amazing. So I just wanted to assure you that a properly set-up dispensary is a pretty impressive thing. Everything I bought there had a measurement and they even cautioned me. They would say, because I, you know, I'm not a user. And they said, well, you better start out with like a quarter or an eighth of one of these and see what happens. And if it, I told them I was trying to sleep at night and I was trying to get an appetite back. And they worked with me. Anyway, using edibles and later on, I was able to drink once I got rid of the feeding tube and stuff. I used a tea that you just actually put in cold water. I built up an appetite. I got back to work and I didn't have any side effects. That was part of the reason I sought this in the first place is they gave me a very effective pain medication. It was some type of liquid Norco or something. Cleared up the pain, but it knocked me right on my butt and I was no good. And the stuff that they would give me to help me sleep at night, I'd wake up in the morning and I'd be a groggy mess till about noon. And that doesn't work for me. Anyway, I had my card. By the time the two years were up, I started using other methods like breathing and meditating to deal with my anxiety. And I really didn't have any further need for medical marijuana. I let my card expire and I quit using it. And the reason I mention that is because there was no withdrawal. There was no side effects. I didn't have to gradually ease myself off. I have friends who have taken anxiety medication that didn't work out for them. And oh my God, you can't just stop taking it. You got to take two or three months to wean your, and it wasn't the case with the medical marijuana. I let my card expire and the last bit of medicine, I used it. And the next day, I didn't and I carried on it. Speaking of YouTube, you can see some pretty incredible videos on there. I think he was trying to show you a patient. But people with Parkinson's, epilepsy, seizures, fibromyalgia, autism, whatever, you can see people being helped by medical marijuana. I think it's worth mentioning again that people in Michigan voted to legalize it. The majority of voters believed it'd be beneficial to allow it in our state. And having the opportunity to avail oneself of medical pot is something we apparently, as a state, voted in favor of. More and more people are reexamining their views on medical marijuana. And I'd like to cite my dad as a great example. When I was a kid, he equated pot use with what he liked to call hop heads. He grew up in and around Detroit. And what he was referring to as a hop head was somebody who used heroin. And in my dad's mind, it was all parcel same stuff. Before he passed away, my dad did a complete 180. He actually voted in favor of the legalization of medical pot. I would say his change of heart came because my stepmother died of pancreatic cancer at a pretty young age. And as part of their search to find some relief, my dad had a couple of occasions to get some marijuana for her. And it was gotten way before medical pot was legal. But he told me that it helped ease her pain quite a bit. And that was back in the days when you just went out on the street and got it. Anybody who knows me knows I'm a great cheerleader for Lowell. Been on the marketing committee for over a decade. I'm currently on the DDA. We like Lowell so much, we sold our house and want to move here. For a little town, we're pretty forward-thinking. I was really impressed when our cops had body cameras before it was even a thing. Scott came into my store one day a few years ago and I didn't even know what it was. And he explained it. And that was before it got all the attention. The sense of community here is amazing. I support Flat River Outreach Ministries. I love it that the churches pull together and help people in need. The Pink Arrow Project is amazing. Never thought I'd benefit from it, but I hope you all know that the reason we have a Gilda's Club in Lowell is because of the Pink Arrow. No other town of our size has a Gilda's Club. And the reason I'm telling you all that is as a cancer survivor who was helped immensely by medical pot, I can speak with firsthand knowledge of its efficacy. From time to time, I meet with and encourage others who've been diagnosed with cancer. One of the first recommendations I have for any of them is to get their medical marijuana card and use it. The edibles and teas are a wonderful help. We have Pink Arrow. We have Gilda's Club. To me, having a dispensary for medical marijuana in my favorite town just makes sense. I'd urge all of you to support it and help bring one to our town. Thanks.
That concludes my presentation. We'll get the information emailed to you guys who asked for it.
Any council comments? I think what we've learned here tonight has been terrific. And I think we have some more to learn. And I would look to later, I have to check my schedule and so forth, but to attend one of those Michigan Municipal League, I don't know what we, oh, the presentation.
Senator.
Thank you. To learn a little bit more from what Michigan Municipal League has got set up for this. I think that would be a good thing. I'm trying to approach this with an open mind, but I'll be honest with you. I very much agree to the direction that Cliff has presented here tonight. And I voted for having medical marijuana on the ballot. I mean, I signed the petition and I voted for it. I think that in many cases, there are very good benefits for it. I know that there's always abusers that will take advantage of programs. And that's unfortunate. Those are the real thieves. And to take away what help can be given to people that are in dire straits. And I'm very sympathetic. I want to learn more. I would encourage all of us to do that. And then to also follow this up with another information meeting that we can do publicly and have a public hearing at some point here in the future to get input from our own local citizens as to their feelings about this. But I, well, enough said. You got the picture.
Thank you. Jeff Namier?
I agree with Jim. Thank you for sharing your stories. I agree as well. I think there's so many good benefits, but then you hear about the negatives. And I think if we keep educating and doing our due diligence and getting both sides of the story and keep educating, I think we can move forward. So I agree with Jim.
Ron?
Right to the wire, 681 Bridge Record. I definitely want to encourage each of you, and I appreciate Ellen, the work you're doing. I want to encourage the rest of you to be doing that work as well. I can remember back in the 70s, I was one who worked on the streets of Allentown, Pennsylvania. And in the streets, I was dealing with drugs that were, you know, unbelievable at that time. And as a farm boy from Ohio, a great, you know, tremendous education through that time that I did that. And there's still some carryover for those of us who experienced the bad side of cannabis. And more than cannabis, actually. And, you know, cannabis was probably the least of it. But we, as I have had ministry within this community and within the area, and as I've kept my ear to the rail in dealing with people, there is a great benefit that we can do for individuals in the county, in the area. If we can put this together in the right way, recognizing that you're going to have people who are going to stand right here where I'm standing, who are going to be working out of fear, out of some negative experiences that have occurred in their life, some of them just horrendous. We will never answer with reason the things that have never, that weren't started with reason. So fear will be a part of it and we aren't going to be able to reason that away. But I think what we can do, this town is always pulled together to work for the benefit of those who are our brothers and sisters, our neighbors. And we can work together on this one as well. And I want to encourage you to take the lead as a consul for doing that. We will need some education, a tremendous amount of education, actually. We will need time for the community to talk together and to talk with you. Not for you to be reactive, but for you to be informative. And so we need you to do your due diligence, your homework, and take the lead for us. And I, as a citizen, will do all I can do to be a part of that. Because I do believe that there is a great deal of help that we can give medically to individuals who can find that relief in no other ways. And I think I really appreciate Cliff sharing his story on that. But there's a lot of other stories out there as well. So I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Cantor, anything?
No, it was a very moving testimony from people that have walked the walk. And it's a totally different side of it than we've really seen. I also grew up in the 70s, but it's a different thing. But end of life, help for people is huge. I've seen some people really suffer with things. And if we can help with that, I think it'd be great.
Appreciate Raj, you're talking about fear. To me, it's an acronym for false evidence appearing real. And there is a lot of fear regarding cannabis, marijuana. Yeah, I'm a seven-year survivor, maybe eight now, of a cancer scare. I had a melanoma on my shoulder that was carved out of me. And I remember the fears. I never had to go through chemo or anything. I never had to suffer that agony, but I know the fear. But I really thank everybody for stepping up and talking. It's been quite a fun meeting.
Thank you. Pedro Mike, anything?
This is obviously a political decision on the council, so it's really not my, an area where I'm going to provide a recommendation to council on policy action. However, my only, the only thing that I would consider is, well, really two things. The first thing you have to consider is obviously with the current situation of the police department, they're going to be a major player involved in this. And I would strongly urge the council that whatever you want to do, I would let that situation stabilize before you do anything. And the only other issue that I, to think about is I have a strong possibility that recreational use is going to be voted in, go on the ballot in 2018. Very strong possibility that the state, that the issue in the state will probably pass. From an administrative standpoint, the concern that I have is if you do opt-in, which is fine, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be writing new zoning standards a year from now. If we approve it, we're gonna be writing new zoning standards a year from now because the laws are gonna basically change it. So that's just something to think about. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. I want to thank you guys all for coming and telling your stories. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So I'll vote at six fifty-two.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes.